I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call shows Kevin Huber and Marcia Franek are absent. Also present is our student rep and reigning Kalachki queen tonight, so it's an honor to have her. Just thought I'd do a shout out. Thanks Trevor for the reminder. Also, before we jump into anything, we just need to add to the agenda the land sale resolution for the lot located at 350 Tyrone Street in Lee Center. So, we'll start with the administrative report.
Thanks Josh. Welcome everyone. Congratulations. That wasn't a sign of the warning. We haven't seen you in the months before.
I guess.
Very cool. So let's go through a few areas. I'm kind of out of direct reading as well. Starting with some communications and marketing. Obviously, we have some grades, some lawnsdale maze just went on. We've got the Simontoni Fair coming up, so looking at representing at those. Working on getting some swag items and so on to get our folks. The Montgomery Parade as well. I couldn't attend Lawnsdale once because they just had some history, but it's very, very good. Looking at doing some calendar work to mainstreaming some things on the calendar. Also working on doing some logo updating for all of our directors and staff so that when we publish things and do things that we have our own little logos, so on and so forth. Teaching and learning, preparing for induction week. As we know, that's coming up for teachers. New teachers are coming up next week. Principals and then our special services director. Been working on workshop week to make sure that we have all the teachers staffed with their PD and the right PD so that we can move the school year forward. I wouldn't say a struggle, a little bit of struggle, just trying to bring that down a notch with all the things that we added on for the prior year. And then mainstreaming it down into the things that our teachers actually need to do to keep doing well. So, they're working on that. We're almost finished with that, so that's good. Our evaluation system, we're also looking at to make sure that we get our teachers the right evaluations and the tools to use and utilize that PD appropriately. Evaluation systems change often, but we're really trying to hone in on a system that works even a little bit better. Community education side, we have new preschool teacher hired from Lawnsdale. Kids' Own Coordinator in Lee Center was hired. We've got a whole bunch of preschool and kids' own applications coming in, so enrollment on those ends are looking pretty good right now, so I'm really happy about that. Getting ready for back to school as well for the little ones, which is kind of fun. And then we're just keeping an eye on the dip in the census as many schools are for some of the little, little ones that are coming up behind preschool, as most people are aware. Special services, working on hiring sped teachers and some pairs. Right now, we still have some sped teachers and quite a few pairs that need to be hired. And as obviously the school year is getting closer and closer, that's becoming more difficult. Without trying to put too many students on a teacher caseload, which becomes very overwhelming sometimes for some of our staff, so we are trying to find some sped teachers. Working through a lot of individual student placements at this time. We have been growing in our sped population. So just making sure that we place our students in the right situations and areas to utilize the IEPs that they are put on and then obviously following up with the IEPs. Sped files, so if you don't know, down in our file room over at TCU Montgomery, it is a, right Brenda? It's got a lot of stuff in there. So we've hired a few of our staff members this summer to go through our sped files. They are now up to about 1974 and took a good part of the summer to get that far just to get everything in the computer system, so everything's not on paper and in boxes because it was, it's been starting to get to the ceiling and we just want to make sure that we have access to those files. So we're working on that continuously, probably a little bit throughout the school year, but then again next summer to get us caught back up. And plus then we can start throwing some of the sped materials away as we don't need to hold on to them for so long. Facilities. Right now, we're working on a 10-year facility plan. It's starting to fall into place pretty well, especially after we just put in some HVAC units. We've got the parking lots outside and some of our other units, especially some of our chillers, boilers, pool, all the big ticket items that we need to plan ahead of time. So that plan is coming together really very nicely right now. And we'll work on that a little bit more too when Dion, our finance manager, gets his feet a little bit more wet as well. The glycol for our systems will be here this week in Monty, so right now it's coming out pretty clear. If you don't know what glycol is, it's actually the antifreeze to make sure that our heating systems don't freeze in the winter. So now they are pretty well running clear, so the glycol will be going in this week at some point. So those will be up to speed. Quite frankly, we'll feel some temperatures in our buildings that'll be very stable over the winter, which we haven't experienced in some of our buildings. So looking forward to that. We offered two positions for custodials today, so we'll be full capacity. They both accepted it, so it's just a matter of them getting on the next board approval. They're not on for tonight. Oh, are they on there tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, we got those on there. They are on there tonight, thank you. So we'll be approving those. So we'll be full staff for our facilities, which will be awesome. Food service, our Lee Center repairs have been completed, so our one cooling system over there for our foods has been completely restored and is up and running, which is really exciting. And she's been able to purchase some new things for the high school, some new stations, so on and so forth, and some of the funds that we've had for that. So food service is ready to go for the summer. They're also going to be helping us get with breakfast and lunch for when the teachers come back, which is also very exciting. Athletics, ball sports began today. I was going to ask Chad how many student athletes we have, but it's a lot based on what I've seen, especially I can see soccer out my window. So that's really exciting. Saw a huge amount of swimmers walk by the window today, so school's getting ready to start. That's how I always look at it when I know, don't. When the sports kids walk by, then it always feels like school's getting ready to start. And then technology, we finished up putting some TVs around. The timing system in the pool is almost ready to go, so we now have touchpads. There's a couple of video monitor screens in there, so the student athletes can now see their times as soon as they touch the wall, which means some other teams are going to want to come to compete with us, which will be really exciting. So I know the swim team is pretty excited about that, as now they have a timing system that will work out really well. And I know Lane's excited too because we can do some Special Olympic things in there now and then qualify some students for some state things and maybe some national things. So it'll be pretty exciting to have that up and running. And just a couple of other things to finish with. Land sales, you just heard Josh just mentioned that we'll do approval for the one in Lee Center sales tonight. We did sell the one in Montgomery and then we still have one other one available. And then hire wise, I just said we need some pairs. We need four pairs, eight paraprofessionals, an elementary music teacher, and one literacy coach going into the school year is where we're at for staffing. So not too much different than last year when I looked up. Last year, we were looking for three sped teachers versus four, so. And we finished the end of the year, end of the year last year with needing eight pairs. We still need eight pairs, so we're pretty consistent there. But yeah, we're ready for school to start. It's winding down, things are looking really good. People have been outside to see the parking lots here, the Lawnsdale, Lee Center. TCU Montgomery will be done, might be done, but will be started this week and then finished within about two or three weeks, so all the parking lots will be pretty up to speed and the district will look really pretty good. So that's all I got.
Just curious, how long do you have to, how long do you have to maintain sped files? Is there like a statute for that?
Fifteen years.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, so we've carried some over from both districts.
Okay.
So it's just gone down into that file room. And it's all the district office files, it's all the grades, reports. It's, it's probably got 200 file cabinets in there, Brenda?
Maybe not 200, but.
A light is shaking ahead, but it's got at least 100 and some file cabinets in there, so yeah.
I was just going to add too, it's the, it's our first year in the Big South. You mentioned the sports coming in, so I think that's pretty, it'll be an adjustment for some of the programs, but I think it's going to be a good thing for TCU moving forward, so.
Yeah, no, it'll be pretty exciting. And then someone, I can't remember who it was, but someone mentioned middle school. Middle school isn't part of the Big South, so people are aware of that? Or it was Maggie. They're not a part of the Big South, so middle school can pretty much compete against whoever. So they'll be competing against a lot of the similar schools that they've competed in the past. Plus, it's kind of nice because they're a little more local as well, so that'll work out pretty well. And they don't start for a couple of weeks, middle school.
Sounds good. Thanks. Just again, I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda, but just a reminder that we have to add that land sale resolution to the end of the agenda. So given that, I'll seek an approval of the agenda as amended, or a motion to approve, I should say.
I'll make a motion.
Second. And a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Chris Blesak to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion's passed for one. Under the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the July 8, 2024 board meeting. Under personnel, we have employment ending. Greta Kunzie, preschool teacher. Sarah Costello, high school band teacher. Abby Sexy, elementary teacher. Jaden Earler, paraprofessional. Veronica Stasny, assistant cook. Shannon Holitzky, middle school student council advisor. Jack Frobridge, special education teacher. Jenny Frederick, eighth grade softball coach. Donna Morgan, paraprofessional. Jackie Gramling, paraprofessional. Ruth Trotner, paraprofessional. Jenna Gullicks, kids' own aide. Under new hires, we have Craig Filtgen, special education teacher. Stephen Burl, assistant principal. Gabrielle Calgary, paraprofessional. Elise Ilka, elementary teacher. Greg Westerman, head baseball coach. Brittany Clear, paraprofessional. Danielle Glynn, volunteer dance coach. Nathan Reed, band instructor. Amanda Pook, kids' own aide. Kylie Herrera, assistant dance coach. Jackie Gramling, Little Titans preschool teacher. Colin Zender, junior high boys soccer coach. Tyler Glynn, middle school student council advisor. Jessica Biddleman, high school administrative assistant in the counseling center. Paige Smieszek, kids' own worker. Joshua Alexander, custodian maintenance. Michael Mace, custodian maintenance. Jenda Gullicks, kids' own lead. Under leave of absence, we have Madeline Morsing. And on our contracts, work agreements and work policy, we have the 24-25, 25-26 principals contract and the 24-25, 25-26 school nurse personnel. Under policies, our first and final reading, we have policy 506, student discipline. Policy 722, public data and data subject requests. And then policy 806, crisis management policy. Under second and final reading, we have the 902.1 facility use policy. And we have the approval of bills in the amount of $492,921.73 and the finance report. So I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All right, and a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Chris Blesak to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion's passed four to one. Anyone for open forum tonight, Brenda? None. Student school board report, given by the Honorable Kalachki.
Well, we're in summer, so I don't really have anything. People are really excited about that phone policy though. I don't know what to talk to. I asked for people to ask, like, if they have any questions for the school board and everyone just gave me comments that I won't repeat, so never mind.
What question did you ask me though?
Oh, can we wear our watches, even if it's an Apple watch?
Yeah, you can wear your watches.
Because it said on the thing, no, smart watches.
Yeah, it becomes, you know, it becomes more like.
Yeah.
So it says, it says watches on there, but they can still wear them or they can't wear them?
They can wear them.
Why doesn't it say it in there then? Phones and watches.
They can't, they can't be communicating on them, but they can wear a watch.
Okay, well, I don't know. A watch is a watch, but an Apple watch is an Apple watch. That doesn't make sense, doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, so makes, so watches are smart watches now?
Yeah, I understand that. So they can still wear it. But they, the people that have phones, they can have their phones on them.
They can have their phones on, yeah, they just can't have them out during class. So it's the same thing as a smart watch. You can't be on your smart watch or on your phone communicating with.
Is that stated in there?
I believe so.
Just making sure.
I think the basis is just not having it be a distraction, so phone.
Oh, I get that, Chris. I understand it fully.
Yeah, it's, it's made to be during class time is class time and during passing time is passing time. So.
But everything needs to be in writing, you know, in fine print.
Which is a, so by March, we have to have a district-wide cellphone policy. So this is a rule right now. And as we look and explore, then we will further explore what the policy is going to be for the district. It's a big thing in the entire country right now, just for the fact that what schools are trying to do and what they're trying to, or how they're trying to figure it out. MASSP, which is the Minnesota Association for Secondary School Principals, and MESPA, which is the Minnesota Elementary School Association, drew up a policy together. And their policy drew up together actually matches what we're actually using here, which most schools are using right now. But there are also schools right now that are playing with, and I just said that Denise before we started, with bags to put phones in and little boxes to put phones in that block signals. So you can't have your phone at all when the day starts to when it finishes.
I mean, if you're wearing, I know, but if you're wearing a watch and you're going like this and something goes off, of course they're going to get extracted, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, they'll be part of the, we'll have to play and explore because like I said, we're going to have to come up with a true, send you a true policy by, by March. So I'll be working on that as soon as school gets started. I'll be checking in with, I know at the middle school levels, that worked out well last year. The one that the high school is going to, elementary, I'm not worried they can't have them anyway. So we'll be looking at as soon as day one starts, what is it that is happening? Because we also don't want it to be a discipline thing all the time, right? Because then that just becomes a distraction as well, because now I'm coming in to get phones all the time. So it's going to be a work in progress. I've gone through this work in progress at a couple of schools before, but we're going to be monitoring because we're going to have to have something written. And we don't have that in place yet. So most districts are somewhat waiting until February, March to put that full policy in place. So it'll be interesting.
Can we clarify here that both middle schools are going to do the exact same policy?
They are on that goal, or goal, they're on that rule right now. So, yeah. And my understanding is, is one did a little bit better than another one, so that's correct. It's an ongoing, I don't want to call it a beast, but it's an, it's an ongoing.
It's an ongoing battle.
It's an ongoing distraction.
Our whole society is addicted to their phones and screens, so and it's.
Do you think MDE will eventually say the policy will be similar to this? That every school should be on a similar policy where they're just not permitted in a classroom at all?
I think the MDE will draw up something that's going to be more legit and then you can make it more, I don't call it harsh if you want, but there will be, at some point, there will be a minimal allocation. I think that's where MASSP and MESPA drew this up because it was every district put in their ideas on what they do right now currently, and they put it all together and that's what they came up with. Majority was pretty much almost identical to, and, and Alan and David had this written up even prior to that coming out, and then when that came out, it almost matched identical. Because that's pretty much what most schools are doing right now, to try to minimize it, to see what you need to do and how you can do it. Because, yes?
My one question is, you probably already heard the correct somewhere, especially if middle school is. If they get to the disciplinary level where they're being stored in the high school office, you know, for the school day because they violated the policy, is the school willing to take the wrath for, let's say, the phone giving you damage or loss, you know, the liability and cost of that? Obviously, they have to, but I believe that would be, you know, it's going to be in your possession and, you know, it's a rule that you created. Have the school thought about that part of it?
Yes, we did. And then I think it was two meetings before that we talked about having like a, a storage, like with the phones in to get locked, and then they put their code in everything, so.
And I believe Mr. Reese is going to be the one that physically goes to the classroom to pick it up, so it's not going to be teachers bringing them down. And that's what we talked about in our meeting.
Yeah, there's different ways to do that. Some districts, a teacher will take it, our admin will be taking them. And then they'll be stored in the spot in the, in the high school, well, in their own office where they'll be safe and secure. And then they can only get checked back out through one of the principals at the end of the day. So could one get broken between me carrying it from here to there? Possibly. So we're only going, we're only going to have as little and minimal handling of those as possible because they are, they are an expensive device.
All right. Any other comments on that?
Well, it's a good question though, because it creates a lot of anxiety, so.
All right. Any, there's no informational items tonight, it looks like, so we'll move on to new business under donations.
Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district number 2905 accepts with appreciation the following donations and permits their use as designated by the donors. Josh Newbauer Memorial Fund for Student Needs, $3,500. And Montgomery Library Foundation Decodable Readers for Science of Reading, $3,800.
Okay, I'll need a second.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Chris Blesak, excuse me, Chris Blesak introduced the motion, which was seconded by Hillary Byrdzel. This will be passed by a roll call vote. Trevor?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Josh is a yes. Hillary?
Yes.
And Cindy?
Yes.
That's passed by a vote of five zero. I have to count everybody now because we're missing a few. All right, next we have the 24-25, seven through 12 student handbook, which includes the aforementioned cellphone policy. I'll seek a motion to approve the handbook for the upcoming school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Hillary Byrdzel, seconded by Chris Blesak to approve the 24-25 TCU seven through 12 student handbook. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed five zero. Next, we have the 24-25 K six student handbook. I'll seek a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Chris Blesak to approve the 24-25 TCU K through six student handbook. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed five zero. Next, we have First National Bank of Lee Center. I'll seek a motion to approve the, approve the closure of the Tri-City United School account that is held with First National Bank of Lee Center.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Chris Blesak, seconded by Hillary Byrdzel to approve the closure of the Tri-City United School account that is held at, with First National Bank of Lee Center. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed five zero. Last, as mentioned, we have a land sale resolution. It'll be introduced by Chris.
Be it resolved that the Tri-City United School District number 2905 Board of Education hereby approves the sale of County Edition Block 006, AC Lots 12, 13, 14, Lee's River County, Minnesota.
I'll need a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chris Blesak to approve the land sale located in Lee Center, Minnesota, seconded by Trevor Hohn. This will be by a roll call vote. Trevor?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Josh is a yes. Hillary?
Yep.
And Cindy?
Yes.
Motion's passed five zero. Next, I'll seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Chris Blesak to adjourn the meeting at 6:23 PM. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed five zero.
I wish you that.
Okay, well, I'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call finds Kevin Huber absent, otherwise all are attendants. All right, we'll start off with the Titan Pride Awards.
Good evening. It's always a good time for, to come back here and give some Titan awards to some of our Special Olympic athletes. So this, this time around, I'm here to recognize some of our athletes that went off to bocce ball this year. Bocce ball is, is another program that's really well attended. We practice right behind Montgomery Pre-K 8 out in the green space there where the soccer team practices, and we get a couple of fields and things going on there. And this year, we had 17, 18 athletes that participated. So this year, same as the past few years, we do like our area or region event first, which is over at Chadec St. Mary's inside the dome. And then for state, we go up to Woodbury, which is a beautiful facility. And I was talking to one of the parents here, they had softball going on at the same time for Special Olympics, and they do a really nice job of putting these events together. So kudos by the Special Olympics of Minnesota for all they do, so. But when it comes to going to area and state, some of the athletes and families may choose to go. Some of them may, may not choose to go, and the ones that do go, we also will try, provide transportation for them if we need to. This comes out of some of our funds, and we have some of the funds that, that are sitting at the Special Olympics of Minnesota that we acquire through donations and the polar plunge in particular, when we do that over at St. Peter's. So those funds get dumped right back into the program for support and so forth. So last year, we had to buy three sets of bocce ball, ball sets, so. Anyway, just want to recognize our athletes. I know quite a few of them are not here, so Philip Weber, he is one that participates in numerous of those events. He actually got first place in bocce ball, and I'm not sure if I see Philip here. One that we do have here is Cooper Johnston, so Cooper, if you want to come on over. And they'll come over to you, congratulations.
Thank you.
You are welcome, well deserved.
Can you shake hands? Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, Cooper. Congratulations, Cooper.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's kind of funny is before the, before the meeting started, Kristen, her and I were talking back when I was over in the sewer, Kristen was actually a fifth, fifth grade volleyball coach for me. So how we've gone full circle and changed a little bit. Her daughter's now 23, so it's, we've gone a circle a little bit, so thank you guys very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then some of our other athletes that do participate in a lot of things, and some of them are not, not all of them are from TCU, so Cooper here is from the sewer Henderson. And we have some athletes that come from Wasika and some other spots, but we have Becky Crower. She got second, second place. Kathy Russell got third place, and Evan Chadec got third place as well. So thank you to you guys for recognizing our athletes and supporting Special Olympics and for the ones that did show up today. Huh?
Thank you.
I, I sure can stay, just let me grab my, grab my notes here. Never mind what the principals say, they're fully in support of me going before them.
Absolutely.
All right, I was, I was here not too long ago, so it's always great to come up and talk about community education and, and some of the things that we have going on. So today was a big day, this is our first day of preschool, so we always have the, some of the emotions and things going with that. Couple of parents, you know, having some tears and parking lot issues, things like that, rerouting. So I got to be kind of like a crossing guard at the corner by the Montgomery there and just telling people to go down towards the pool, keep going past the bus and all that good stuff today. So it went pretty well today here, and then tomorrow I'll be over in the center. And then Kristen Schlingman, early learning coordinator, she's in Lawnsdale in Montgomery, is kind of helping also. First day of preschool is always, always fun, and our two day kiddos are starting tomorrow, so we're going to be there representing those. So as always, community education, when I kind of give presentations or when people ask, what does community education do besides everything that comes in a catalog? I say I kind of do everything outside of the K-12 system or what Chad Johnson doesn't do. That kind of falls under us. So we have kind of a large umbrella, what we do. We do obviously have a very large education component with our preschool and adult basic education and early childhood family education. Now, we also do a lot of other activities besides youth enrichment, recreation, which is big for us. We run the pool here, driver's education, as you saw, Special Olympics and friendship adventures. So we do have a large partnership with our. with our, some of our regional athletes that participate for some of those as well. Of course, Kids Zone, our childcare program, which is, which is very large for our district, so that keeps us pretty busy. I just want to kind of get some highlights quick on some of the things that we have going on for our preschool this year. In Lonzdale, we have, again, we have two five-day classes going on over there, two three-day classes, and we are proud. We got one more, we got a two-day class that's over there. Last year we did not have one, so this year we have a two-day class that's going on. So that's nice to have that back. And Montgomery be the same as this, this year. We have two five-day classes, two three-day AM classes. We do not have a two-day AM class this year in Montgomery. We didn't have one last year either. In the Center, we'll be the same. We have a five-day class, a three-day P, AM class, and a two-day AM class. Those numbers always seem to be pretty well. Our, the Center class is about nineteen, twenty, and you can only have twenty in a room, so we're kind of sitting right on that, kind of that cusp of filling that class up, which, which is good. And what's exciting about, in the Center as well, as you guys probably know, we are now in the main building. So that has been very beneficial for us, and so our, our room is right next to the Early Childhood Special Ed Room, who also moved over. We're right across the hall from our kindergarten teachers now. Big thanks to Jeff Eppen for helping us out with some of those moves. We had quite a few meetings and, you know, when are we going to move? When are we going to do this and that? And so that really came out, and that's going to be really beneficial for our preschool families and, and our, and our teaching staff. So we're excited to have that. Just some numbers. Our numbers are down a little bit this year compared to, compared to years past, with our census drop that we are anticipating. That's probably expected to be down, down some with that. So that's kind of our COVID, we're starting to hit those COVID babies right now. So we've talked about that before. Another thing that's exciting is with our STEAM push that we have in our K-12, we're also doing that in preschool. And thanks to Mr. Jeff Baumann, we got a ten thousand dollar grant this past spring to start introducing STEAM to our preschool classes. So we're actually going to be doing three modules in each one of the three sites for STEAM, and just kind of listening to some of the preschool teachers during workshop week. That was going, it's going to be pretty exciting. These kids are going to have some pretty cool opportunities, experiences of what they're going to be doing in preschools, so. And I know the teachers are pretty excited about it as well. One, a large component for what we do at the early childhood level is screening. Sometimes you may, may or may not remember the days of screening, bringing your kids in, but it does give you a snapshot of what your child is looking at and how their progress is, is moving forward or not, and also helps us, helps us and parents to identify any possible concerns, which we can, we can address through, through preschool and getting them some of the resources. That has been going pretty well the last year, scheduling some dates. We had a big day on April nineteenth, when we basically took, screening basically took over the Early Learning Center, public health. La Sura County Public Health has been absolutely fantastic in supporting us. We also have support from the Center lines. They come over with their, their eye testing, their vision machine. So those guys that spend the whole day with us, Amanda Sladek and her staff, they help us out that day as well. So that has gone really well. That's been a nice reintroduction to that. That way, that was the way kind of we used to be before COVID hit, and now it's started to come back. And we're starting to screen more of these kids before they go into kindergarten. So we're not trying to pull kids out of, out of kindergarten because within the first month of school, they're supposed to be screened. So with this whole new process that we're doing with screening, we're kind of knocking some of the stuff out early, so it's less and less. And a lot of times the kids that we got to do, we got to screen in kindergarten are typically the ones that may not have been on anybody's radar. It's like, hey, there's a new kid. Hey, have you been screened or not? They're just moved into the community or from a different state. So we tackle those right away. Some other highlights, Kids Zone, childcare. We have RAP in all three sites. New this year, we have RAP in the Center. This is going to be the first time in two years that we have had RAP in the Center. We have five or six kids that are in our five-day PM class, so they're coming to us in the mornings. So that's exciting, so we're having that back. We have morning Kids Zone. We have a few kids that are in morning Kids Zone before eight oh, eight oh five, when they start over, over in the Center. Be the first time in about two years we've had that. So the numbers are hopefully kind of starting to come around a little bit, and a few, about a month and a half ago or so, we hired a new, the Center's site supervisor, Jenna Gullix, who's been with us for, for three years. She is doing a great job over there. The last two summers, she has been my, like my summer site supervisor over there, and there in the past two, three school years, she's actually been over in Lonzdale, working with Julie Tisdale in the room because our RAP numbers are so high. So she's bringing a lot of good experience over, over to the Center, so we're kind of excited to see what's going to, what's going to happen in that. Summer was busy. We took eleven field trips. A couple of them we had to reschedule because of the rain. We had two trips planned to go to Wasika, both outside, and both of those got canceled. So we, on the fly, we, we went some, went to some indoor water parks, but overall and all, it went pretty well. Lonzdale had eighty kids registered alone for the summer, which is quite a bit higher than last year. So we actually added some programs for them just to kind of break it up because they have two, sometimes three, three rooms going over there. We actually took a, neither trip or two to Montgomery here to go to the indoor pool, just to do some other programming and, and some other things. So it was, it was a busy summer. Driver's education, we had about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty kids participate this past year. In the classroom portion, we put on three classes. We do spring, summer, and fall classes, and we try our darndest to put everything in between activities as best that we can. For the most part, it's typically not, not an issue unless we have a unique situation. Say, might be a freshman dressing varsity. I know we've had some, made some arrangements with the trap team. I think one year they went to Nationals, one year, we stayed at Nationals. We did a bunch of them going, going for that. This year we did about a hundred kids behind the wheel. The summertime was busy for us. We started driving towards the end of March a little bit, and then the guys really started cranking up once, once winter sports kind of slowed down because some of those guys don't coach. But the summertime is really busy, and the guys are going to be driving some in the fall as well, just to kind of keep ahead, ahead of the curve. We don't drive a lot in the wintertime because the guys coach, and by the time they, they get done, four o'clock, it's dark anyway. So we have quite a big, quite a big list that's starting off in February. It's February and March as we get going. Youth enrichment and recreation, something new this past year. We did a drama. We did a play, The Enchanted Bookstore, which is our first time. Elise Lundin taught that. We were fortunate to get a very large grant from the Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council down there in Wasika County for about six thousand dollars, and actually covered part of the play and the Nutcracker. The Nutcracker, we bring in every other year, so it doesn't get redundant. So we had twenty-two, twenty-three kids that participated, and that was, and that was for fourth and, fourth, five and sixth graders. So it's something that kind of give them a taste of some of the fine arts before they get into middle school. So that's exciting. So some other, other things that we've done as well. Baseball, we had fifty-nine kids. Flag football, that starts this month. We had sixty, we got sixty-six registered, so those are good numbers. Summer rec, we had a hundred and thirty-six kids out for that. We had close to ninety in the Center. The Center's a whole different animal with that. That's been going around for about six decades over there. Spirit Squad, we got twenty-eight for that. Some of the things that we're working on is a mentoring program. I think Superintendent Babcock may, may or may not have shared some of those things in the past, but in a former life, I used to work for Big Brothers, Big Sisters in Owatonna, and I really enjoyed my time there, and we're looking at starting a mentoring program and starting really small. So I had my initial meeting with some of the counselors here at the high school a week or two ago with Principal Federer to start getting that started. We're going to start really small and hopefully work out of it because we do have some logistical issues that we'll have to work through, especially with having three communities. So we might have to start just in Montgomery, figure some stuff out and go from, go from there. Adult enrichment, some of the things that still remain popular, of course, mature driving class. Those typically get pretty popular when the catalog comes out because people will contact us because they want that discount for their insurance. So those fill up pretty quick. The trips have been going well. One class that I, I actually participated in was a will and trust planning. I have a mother that is getting up there, and I'm the, I'm my mom's power of attorney. So it's one of those conversations that you don't want to have, but it's time to have them. So that was actually interesting. It was actually put on by an attorney from New Prague, and there was virtual, and we actually partnered with a couple of other school districts for that. So it was very informative, just some stuff that was news to me, and so that was good, good participation. Pickleball is huge with us, and we're fortunate that some of the communities, when they rehab their tennis courts, you look here in Montgomery, they added the pickleball courts here, which has helped us when it comes time for fall, wintertime pickleball. We had pickleball in Lonzdale this year over the wintertime. Some of that helped pick up steam because I think because of the city of Lonzdale and their outdoor ice rink that they put out there. They actually put pickleball courts out there, and they've been leaving the nets out. You know, see if you drive past, there's people playing at random times playing pickleball over there. And pickleball is huge because a lot of those folks that are playing pickleball, they used to be tennis players, or they used to play racquetball. And now kind of, you know, they can't quite cover the ground as much, so that's why pickleball is getting so, getting so large. So it's nice having those snowbirds when they do come back because they kind of get things going for us as well. Friendship adventure, so the friendship adventure side for our individuals with disabilities, that's more of the arts and crafts that we do. So like, for example, this Thursday, we have bingo and pizza. We've been do, we do about nine, ten bingos and pizza a year, typically very well-attended. You know, they come and play bingo, we buy some prizes, Dollar General, get them off of Amazon. Of course, they all get pizza because typically it's over their, their time that they're getting supper and stuff at their, at their place. And so it's a pretty good time that we, we have with that. But we have other ones. We do pumpkin decorating. We have a family that's outside of Lonzale that donates three dozen pumpkins to us, that the athlete, or the attendees get to participate, paint a big one, typically a small one, take them home. We do some Valentine stuff, some holiday-themed things as well for all of them. And of course, as you saw, we have our five sports that we do. We have bocce ball, swimming, unified volleyball, poly hockey, and bowling. Bowling is starting on the twenty-fifth, and that's usually pretty well-attended as well. Most of the classes that we participate with our sports are on Wednesdays. Seems to be the least amount of conflict that we do have. This will be our last program that we have with Melissa Bell. Melissa has been a part of our Special Olympics program before I got here from the inception. My predecessor, Mark, was here. She is, or in Fable now, working, but she has agreed to do bowling for us, so we're in the process of looking for somebody to kind of take over that, that Special Olympic portion. And, and then probably sometime down the road, we'll probably have Melissa here to recognize her because that program did not happen without, without her and her connection with some of those athletes that, that do come. So she will be missed. Just some other things, adult basic education. They also made a move this year in our, in our, over in the Center. They used to be downstairs. They're now upstairs. So upstairs in the primary building, we'll have the adult basic education, and we have Southwest Metro up there, and I believe Amy Souter, our food services director, she now has an office over there as well. So they all start classes here soon. This year they're going to be offering GED and ESL classes, so that'll be a little bit more than what they've had in the past. So that's great to hear that they're doing that. Eleven school districts make that up. La Sura Henderson is the fiscal host. So they receive all the funds that ABE acquires from contact dollars. The more people you have in the seats for class, the more money you get paid from the state. So everything's set kind of like in a fixed formula and how, and how that gets funded, but all the school, all eleven school districts, all the funds go to La Sura to support their teaching staff and, and put on the program. Some other things we have going on, we have, well, next, in October, we'll have our annual firemen's event over in Lonzdale. That's always well-attended, so if you get a chance to go over there for that, that'd be, that'd be great. Our ECFE Literacy Night, that takes place in November. It's always the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That'll also be a move. That'll be in our new space over in the Center. And then we got, our biggest event that we put on is Breakfast for Santa, so that's going to be our first Saturday in December. That's up here at the high school. I think last year we were pushing three hundred people that came through for breakfast, which was pretty, pretty good. We have a, a great Santa who is a part of our administrative team, so appreciate everything that he, he does for us. So, and I always want to recognize our community partners for, for some of the programs and, and support that we get. Our three local libraries are fantastic. We put on events in the summer, and we partner with them. It's a great collaboration, and they're friends, they're friends of the library program. They typically cover the cost of these events that we bring in. We're fortunate that these big events that we bring in, they all happen at the school because we got the facility, and, and the partnership's great, so it works, works great, both sides. So all three of those, all three cities, Lonzale, Montgomery, and the Center, they're great partners of ours, they, you know, for, you know, using facilities for different classes and events. Each community gives us five thousand dollars to support our summer rec program. So, and the Center just came on like two years ago because the other ones did it. And we don't, we can't do summer rec with a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty kids each year without their support. We don't, we don't charge enough for a six-week program, so great appreciation to them. Greater Main Kitter United Way and the Rice County United Way. We've been fortunate to be partnering with them probably for the last four or five years for our Little Titans Preschool Scholarship Program. We have, obviously, we have some high numbers for free and reduced lunch, people that just cannot afford to send their kids to preschool. And we do get Pathways two dollars from the state, which is around thirty-nine thousand dollars a year. That money is gone in a hurry. So this extra money that we do get from these two United Ways goes to help bridge the gap of some of the families that come to us that may not qualify for Pathways two, or the money's all spoken for already, but we're able to utilize those dollars to make sure those kids get an opportunity to come to preschool. And we do have some flexibility with that because we can assist somebody with twenty-five percent, fifty percent, all of it. We can help them with transportation if it comes down to it. Between the two of them, we get over ten thousand dollars a year. You know, so that, they have, they have sent a lot of kids to preschool over the last four, four years, so, which is great. So, and of course, we get numerous sponsors and donors through community education, the KCs, service clubs, the Initiative Foundation, and things like that. So it's us that allows us to have some more fun with what we do. So, questions?
Glad you can keep track of all that.
I, I got, I got a lot of great help.
Rain did that for like seventy minutes, especially.
Yeah. Turned her down a little bit.
It's always amazing how much goes on in community education.
Yeah, it's fun. It's fun.
Thanks, Lane.
All right, thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Lane didn't mean to miss the Lonzale Lions that do the, a vision testing yet.
Oh, of course.
Yes, of course. Over in the Lonzale building. Welcome, and thank you, boy, for having me, Superintendent Babcock. Appreciate it. As you know, our, our fall athletic season started out hot and humid and severe weather and high heat index canceled cross-country meet soccer games, and this high school actually stepped in and put some restrictions on practices as to how long you go and, and water breaks. But it was, it was warm today, but it's going pretty well. Want to give kudos to that lady right there for bringing in Doc Brown for our workshop week. I had a twenty-eight-year-old veteran that said, and is all of his years going through workshop week, that was the best speaker he's ever heard. So that was fantastic. Doc Brown was excellent, so kudos there. Open house night, we were packed here. We had people all over the place. A couple of years ago, we started scheduling the freshmen for the second half, and that has worked out well. Doesn't mean they weren't here, but we had grades ten through twelve here to start off right away. A lot of people came. I would say we probably had a ninety percent of students that came in on open house. Not sure what happens on parent-teacher conference nights, but open house is always a big, big hit. We had Strawbridge Studios here that are taking pictures again, in the bandroom, the choir room, and the foods room, and that has worked fantastic the last two years. Been a lot of kudos from photographers and parents and students on how that goes. We had our meeting, Mr. Reese and I, at seven-thirty for the freshmen and other parents, and we went about thirty, thirty-five minutes and brought the advisors down for the ninth graders and had them leave with their advisor to go back into the classrooms that way. Membership, we're at six hundred and seventeen high school students as of today. Grade nine, one fifty-four, grade ten, one fifty-seven, grade eleven, one fifty-one, and grade twelve, one fifty-five. So we're between one fifty-one and one fifty-seven, all four grade levels. We met, did a weekly with the office team today and counselors and social worker, and we got three or four students. We're just trying to find them yet. We were, we got a report yesterday, two had gone to New Prague instead of coming to TCU, and nobody told us that. So we're tracking. And nobody told us that, so we're tracking kids down to see where they're at. Six international students, four from Germany, two from Spain. We've got one of our German girls who has yet to arrive, she's scheduled to be in on the 15th. And so we had two of our German boys arrive today. And kudos to Josh's brother's family who, John and Amanda Belkey, who are housing one of our students. And that's always good to go. I've never turned down an international student and never planned to. It's just great bringing that different flavor, variety into the building. It, it really helps educate our teenagers as to what there is outside of a small rural community. Whether it be language, religion, culture, all kinds of things, I think food, food's a big one. We had a freshman first day last Tuesday and we had a lot of wide-eyed kids walking through the building on that very first day. We had them sign the, a commitment to graduation banner and we'll get that posted here. Student schedules, we kind of closed changing classes last Friday at the end of the day. The only thing that may happen yet is our college biology course. I'm going to meet with that group tomorrow because it does not look like I can offer the college bio for college credit due to teaching with the late departure of our biology teacher in the summer. TAA is in year two, last year I remember sharing here and then this spring. Last year we had six students that if you would have asked me when the school year started if they would have a chance to graduate, I would have given a flat out no. All six of those students graduated last year and I want to give kudos to the TAA program. First hour is a chance for them to work on an online course, multiple ones as the year goes by to earn those credits back. And so a very successful program. If we use a simple number of $7,000 times six, that's $42,000 there that we kept within the district. But even better yet, they got a diploma. They will not, or some are actually students that had dropped out the previous year and came back. And so that's always a positive when we've got those things happening and it's through the educational program. Kudos to Jean Cop, kudos to Kevin Babcock after we talked with them and said this program will work. They gave us the FTEs to have it go forward. So this is the second year. Katie Kea is the English teacher, Matt Miller is the social studies teacher and Tony Haves is the math teacher. David Reese spends a lot of time and works hard on this program. Amanda McCall, where we split out students is, she's in charge of the TAA Titans and really gets to know them well. Is there for social and emotional purposes, is there to help with credits and to keep them motivated for those young people to talk to somebody who really shows a lot of cares. This year we have 24 students in that program right now. Many are students that have rolled forward from last year who are juniors, who are seniors this year. We even put in a couple sophomores last year that are juniors this year. Then we've got some new students, so it's an exciting program. In a couple of weeks, we'll have homecoming. Both the junior and senior class girls got their Powder Puff t-shirts approved. We always look at those and make sure those little sayings on the front or the back are appropriate for school-wise. And both of them are inappropriate and yeah, you laugh. So they'll be getting those ordered. It's open to the whole classes. Anybody can order a Powder Puff shirt, girls, guys. Probably get some parents that'll probably order some as well. After homecoming, which we've got the coronation on Monday night, September 30th, 5:30 PM in the PAC. Because we've got home volleyball that night, we've got home BNC football that night. So we'll crown a king and queen and then we'll get people to stay and support our Titan athletes. Powder Puff is on Wednesday, October 2nd, we're going to do it out here on the high school football field. It's going to follow our boys playing volleyball this year. A lot of different scheduling that had to take place for this to all work together and fall into place. We sent out Don Marcusson's reminder for people who want to get a homecoming t-shirt. That last blast went out today and that closes I think in two days. The two big topics. E hallway pass is going extremely well. I've got a teaching staff that's giving all kinds of kudos saying they really like it. Mr. Rumsa told me today that he had a young man with seven minutes left in, in class. Because keep in mind, you can't use it in the first five. You can't use it when the teacher's teaching the lesson for that day. And then when they're done teaching the lesson, a student can use e hallway pass if they need to go to the restroom. And Mr. Rumsa just asks the student, well, we got seven minutes left. Do you want to take the time to fill out a e hallway pass or do you want to wait seven minutes? Student goes, I'll wait. And he went during passing time. So that is going extremely well. Office staff is using it, administration is, is using it, of course the teachers are. And so, and the counseling office, so it's, it's really working out well. And then of course, tone to tone, no phone. 19 phones have been taken in the first four days. We've got our little lockup cabinet with the 24 slots. The funniest one was on the first day. Mr. Reese went down to a math classroom because that teacher called and said I got three phones for you. He walked down there and the girls handed them over without any issue. In fact, there's not been one single issue with the student handing it over because basically if it's out, it's seen. But two of the girls came after school to pick their cellphones up and one didn't. She actually got to the parking lot. Well, she got out front and her mom picked her up and they're driving off the property and that's when she noticed, oh my goodness, I don't have my phone. After, well, it's third hour, so after four hours of, of times, they turned around and came back and she picked her phone up. I asked my own Titan, my wife asked him, so did you go through with draw? This was last Wednesday, he goes, well, yeah, of course, I didn't get to really do much enough. I said, Grant, you realize you can use it during passing time. Well, I don't want to be late for class, so I leave it in my pocket. I said, hi, you're, you are learning, very good, very good. So we've had 19 phones in the first four days, seven, six, three and three. So expect that to drop to about one tomorrow. It's gone extremely well, so. Tony Barnack told me it was his best first day ever as a teacher last Wednesday. He did not see one single phone in all of his classes. Yeah.
Any repeat offenders?
Not yet, no. Nope. Because then the consequence goes a little bit longer, yeah. So thank you board for that approval on tone to tone, no phone. It's really been pretty quiet and there's no kids in the hallway. I scared myself twice today, I walked by the gym bathroom and the lights were off and I went, why are the lights off? Were the automatic lights because literally nobody had been in there for quite some time. Because we don't allow those to be used during, during the class day. During class, they can be used during passing time. But with the B wing, F wing bathrooms, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thanks, Alan. Alright, members of the board and Superintendent Babcock, thanks for letting us share too. Abby is not here tonight, but we all connect and kind of share just how it's going in all of our K6 and K8 buildings. So we have some highlights. Before we get to some of the highlights, I kind of connected with Alan saying the freshmen are wide-eyed. And I was humbled this morning when we, we taught lunchroom expectations to our kindergarteners. And you never assume anything and we thought we nailed it. And at the end, we had a little boy who was all set on eating his hot dog today and he comes up to me teary eyed and he goes, "I don't like vegetables and I really don't want to have to put ketchup on them." Somehow, somehow he thought you had to take the vegetables and you got to put some type of sauce on it and it ruined his day. But we're, we're back on the right track after that. But I guess it's kind of been a whirlwind since the end of August. And the first thing we kind of had on our plate after a lot of summer learning was welcoming new teachers into our buildings, which was just fantastic. It was really nice to watch Elida and Carrie Langer along with Melanie, which was very heartwarming for me coming from the Lonsdale building. Lead our teaching staff through lots of new scenarios and kind of getting them to know a little bit about TCU, what we expect, how we can help develop them. And I heard from many of the new teachers and some that I've worked with in previous districts, just how happy they were to have multiple levels of support that they can go to and not really be feeling overwhelmed. And they were very thankful for that. I know I have six new teachers in my building and I'm looking forward to the uniqueness of each of them and what they'll bring to help make our teams better. And I know Jeff and Abby are feeling the same way about the new staff that they're bringing along. And it's already been really fun to get into their classrooms, see their teaching style and just seeing some new things that you see from teachers who have taught in other districts that they bring to our school and they're sharing it with the staff we already have. And that's been just great. Right after new teacher week, we had workshop week. This is the second year in a row, I think all of our admin staff feels really good about the time that we spent as a district together as a whole, our building time, giving teachers their time, where it feels like we have a, we've really hit the nail on the head the last couple of years with the balance that we've been able to provide teachers with new learning. And this year we even gave them a little bit more classroom time just with the new expectations at the K3 level for a curriculum update and reading and then also they have to go through our read act training. So we got really good feedback from that. And it was always fun to start that first day welcoming everyone back. And we always talk about our students getting back on routines, but teachers got to get back on routines too. And it was great having everyone back in the buildings together.
Yeah, speaking of having everyone back, it was great to get our families back in the building too before school. So I don't remember if this is the fifth or sixth year we've done the building back to school workshop. When the families are coming in to meet. It just provides a more of a low-key start. If you ever walk in any of our buildings at, well, 7:30, you guys start about what, 10?
After brunch.
After brunch. But if you walk in, you know, at 20 minutes before school starts, right up until kind of that opening start time, the buildings are really chaotic when we're bringing in, you know, 300 to 400 kids into those buildings and even more in Montgomery, probably close to 500. And so it's really chaotic. And so for our kindergarteners or our new students that are new to us, our families dropping off, it's, it's a pretty, it's a lot. And so having them kind of ease back in and come into buildings and be able to walk around and, and ask questions and see things. And even those that have been there before for many years already, it's good to have them come back again, even as fifth and sixth graders. To just kind of ease back in, get to know their teachers, have their own personal time. And I think that's really, it really sets the stage for a calm start to the year for kids. They know where they're going, they know what's going on. As our kids age up in levels, they change specialists sometimes, they might change service providers as they age out and age into a new group. Of course, their general education teacher oftentimes isn't looping with them. And so there's sometimes in some cases, I know for our fourth graders in the center, there's a big shift. There's a lot of new faces for those kids as they kind of age out of that younger group into the more older elementary group. And so those building back conferences are impactful. And as Alan stated about the high school, we get really great participation by our families. I was just looking, I'm waiting for one more teacher to put her stats in, but I think out of about 290-some students that so far I've accounted for, only 10 families did not come in for that conference. And so running at that upper 90s for percent rank again, and I know that's always very similar to what Lonsdale and Montgomery has. I just want you guys to know, we've taken no phones so far. Just want to put that out there. Maybe Abby in Monty has, we don't know, we haven't asked her. I don't know why that's such a big deal, we've been running that same thing for years and we all have a problem with it. No, it certainly makes a difference and I'm certain, I'm reading social media about all the, the push that's on around the state. I'm certainly glad we took that step. And for our kids, it's not any different. It's something, those kind of same things that David and Alan have worked with you guys on, those are the same parameters we've had in place at the middle school for years already. And so one of the things that we're dealing with is, is little kids coming with smart, smart watches and, and those kind of things. And so that's kind of that next level of how do we manage that? So working with some teachers on strategies to, to work through those things too. First days of school for, for us have gone really pretty well. Of course, there's always, as Tony shared his kindergartner story, there's always those few stories of kids in the building who maybe have a rough time with something that you can't expect or necessarily always plan for. And I think it's just reassuring and making sure that they're cared for and that they know, like, these things happen and we work through them and all that. And so, for example, we had an assembly on Friday. I had some really great sort of like musical chair kind of game where a kid had to go grab another kid out of the stands and bring them down. And of course, one of my brand new students who's just joining us for the first time this year got chosen by his teacher to participate. And the very first time he ran smack, grabbed onto somebody else and went right to the floor. There wasn't blood, but it was just like, those things happen. And so a lot of time I had gotten a chance to go back up to his classroom and check on him. You know, nurse had already checked him out, he already had an ice pack and returned that. Another teacher had already stopped in to check to see if he was okay. And then I checked with the office and some, one of the office is either their nurse or one of our administrative assistants had already called home and reported that and, and just made sure. And so it's really nice as the leader to be able to, just making sure those things are happening. And, and then that situation, just knowing people really care about our kids. And just showing all those different lines of who was already in and checking on them. And he's kind of looking at me like, why are you here? I'm just making sure you're okay. And he's like, so so-and-so's already talked to me and so-and-so and then I found out that parent had already been called and all kinds of things. So just good things that we have in place and to support our kids. And I think the first few days for our new staff, as Tony kind of alluded to with that new teacher workshop, things have gone really well. It's good to see them. We've got a lot of new people, especially in certain special services areas. And so some people starting even without that specific license. And so there's been a lot of mentoring going on and just checking in. And it's been great to see some of our other veteran special services teachers jumping in to help support. Whether that's just within some coaching, spending time in the room, answering their questions. And that's been really very evident in the center this year. And then specifically, Wayne mentioned, we moved everybody over. I can, it's already been one day of preschool in our building and I can already tell, like, that was the decision we should have made four or five years ago. It's been, it was great to have the preschoolers in our lowest grade level wing. And it was easy to see the work and the partnership between our early childhood educators and our kindergarten and first grade teachers already happening. Last week when they didn't have kids yet and then today when they had kids coming in, just easy to see how that was a move we should have done a long time ago. And I can already tell that's going to play, pay huge dividends as we move forward. So hopefully some of those things that we've put into place and, and been working on, it's caused some disruption and moving around and some extra things. It's all done with the most positive intentions, trying to impact our kids and our, and our staff. And so it's good to see some of those things happening. What questions do you guys have for Tony and I or? Josh, did we go longer than Wayne or not?
Nope, you came in a little under.
That's good.
You weigh up yet under.
Thank you guys very much.
Who's going to put him underneath the bus here, I want to know.
Abby wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you all for what you do.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I'll throw a few things in here and.
Are we typing you also?
No, I can talk forever. Which, I've had this conversation with our administrative meetings is, this is not what our administrative meetings are, alright? They could, they could literally go 15 hours and we'd still be talking. So to hear and listen to them is a lot of passion, a lot of O C in our staff, which they're compassionate and really adamant about what they do with their careers and their jobs here and how they fulfill the needs of our staff and our students. It's very evident, anybody that sits in that chair. Even coming out of facilities meeting, we have Elida who's sitting over here, we have Anna sitting over here, we have a teacher sitting over here. So it's just great the way the school year started. The principals always spoke about, the teachers were back. I will say that start of this year felt better than the first two years. I think our admin team put a lot of great things together. Elida has continued the processes of what we started to do. We're starting to focus and narrow that in a little bit more. So I think a lot of the meaningful work really took a good space during that teacher workshop week. It felt really good, walking around the buildings, it is quiet and there is less distraction. And it just seems like the kids are really motivated and wanting, wanting to be here more than I've seen. So really excited about that as to where we are going. I can't remember who mentioned, I think Alan maybe did, about Adolf Brown, Doc Brown, who came in and spoke to our staff. Thanks Elida for getting that set up because that was perfectly needed for where our staff was at moving into this year. to help work with kids. And it really fit in well with our strategic plan that we've been implementing. TCU community ensures all means all, and he really hit on the all means all through his presentation. He actually brought up all means all. And I think it really hit home with our staff that we, if we're going to improve our students' overall education and the way they feel, is we do have to embrace them, put our arms around them, and make sure none of our kids get skipped, all right? That's easy to do, because when you have so many kids, sometimes some of the kids in the middle kind of float around, and they're just in our classrooms, and sometimes you forget some things. But I really feel going into the school year that we've embraced that. It'll be really fun to see how we get to NEA break when it comes out, as we continue to push forward. MCA results were published. I'll let Alida, you know, I'm talking today, but Alida will bring up some more data and stats on that. I did compare. Our scores are back to about 2017. We are up in math and reading. Our big focus over the last couple of years was reading and our literacy, and Alida's continued to work on that with our principals. That score did, was our biggest jump. And we have buildings that are jumping to different areas and so on and so forth. But the whole idea there is, as we look at the, we scaffold our systems across the district, and our principals continue to work with each other, is how do we find those kids that are in the gap, and how can we continue to find the learning curves of people that aren't meeting our goals that we need and want to create? So through our strategic plan, we'll be looking at those goals. I appreciate the Board for helping to fulfill some of the bullet points to look at those. Now, we're going to be setting up those meetings with directors and principals to finalize those goals as we look at really all means all. And I probably have said it before, but the last admin meeting that we had, it was fun to be in the room where you could tell that the administration embraced the work that they did with the strategic plan. I think I said it three times in that meeting. But everything kept coming back to really that all means all for all of our students and all of our staff, and really taking care of what truly is happening within our classrooms in the district. So really happy with that. I'm not going to report on too much else. Parking lots, just if anybody's listening, we're almost done with that portion. Wayne mentioned it. Thanks, Wayne, for being accommodated, because that parking lot by the GM, by the early childhood area, is being done right now. They actually put the first layer of asphalt down. The parking lot back in the back of Montgomery has been lined and striped. That one is done. And across the district, the parking lots are pretty much done. I am hoping to take a walk-through in about two weeks to see if there's anything that was missed. We're waiting on some signage, but the district is looking phenomenal just by having those parking lots redone, which have needed to be done in quite a while. And also, to thank you to our custodial staff, Jav and his crew, for the way things have shaped up over the summer, the way they're looking, the way the leads have stepped up with the principals, how they've been communicating and working with those folks to make sure our staffs are putting our facilities up to speed. And they look good, they feel good. So really happy and pleased with those are right now, too. So, but I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to have you come back up. I know you gave these to me, but you printed them and made them, so I'm going to have you come back up. But I want to say that on behalf of our staff, the appreciation for all the folks sitting at the table right now, not just because it's our school board recognition month, but the work that you do for this district and the way you promote and help our students and our teachers thrive to bring the best education possible. And the growth that we've been seeing over this last couple of years is very evident in the work that you do here. So I can't thank you enough for myself, on behalf of the staff. So Anna has printed up something for you, and she also has a very cool sweater TCU pin for you. So I'm going to let you hand those up to our folks here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like the pin.
So again, thank you, Board. Thank you, admin team, for the work that you've done up to this point and all the work that you do. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Josh.
And we did get the privilege of seeing Dr. Brown also at the Minnesota School Board's convention a couple of years ago. That was, it was pretty phenomenal. So to have him here for our TCU staff was pretty, was pretty good.
Yeah, he's phenomenal.
Yep.
Really good teacher.
He gets them a lot. I mean, no matter where you are, or your saving life, or what profession you're in, he plays a part into everything that you do in everyday life, so.
Yep. All right. I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make one.
I have a motion by Marsha Franek, seconded by Chris Wussack, to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed, 6-0. Next, over the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the August 12th and August 20th, excuse me, the August 12th board meeting and the August 26th special board meeting. Under personnel, we have employment ending, Abigail Teagan, paraprofessional, and Amanda Pook, paraprofessional. Under new hires, we have Zella Machinsky, paraprofessional, Heather Wells, paraprofessional, Jason Hollum, Lee Center, Middle School Student Council Advisor, April Iverson, volunteer boys soccer coach. I'm going to butcher this one. Steven La Junessi, special education, what's that? Was it close? Okay. Special education teacher. I wonder how long it takes students to learn to say that, but anyway. Then we have Nancy Saban, kitchen helper. And approval of bills in the amount of $384,110.59, and the finance report. So I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Hillary Burzil, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. And it looks like we have no one in open forum, nothing under informational items. No committee updates at this time either, quiet meeting in that regard. And then under new business, we have some donations.
May I resolve that the school board's intended school district number 2905 accepts with appreciation the following donations and permits their use as designated by the donors. France and Bank Montgomery recycled folders for student needs and covers, $121.69 for community headed needs.
I'll second it.
We have a motion introduced by Chris Wussack, seconded by Trevor Hohn regarding the donations. I'll see, this will be, excuse me, by a roll call vote. So Trevor?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes.
Yes.
And Hillary?
Yes.
Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have the 24-pay, 25 preliminary levy certification. I'll seek a motion to approve the levy authority for 2024 payable 2025.
And just make a comment about that, just because we always do this, the maximum levy at every time this time of the year. So this is something that we do each and every year until we get to December.
Correct.
And then once I get settled, then?
Yep.
That's Marsha. Thanks, Marsha. Chris, that was you?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion by Marsha Franek, seconded by Chris Wussack, to approve the maximum levy authority for 2024 payable 2025. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have the Future Ready CTE Impact Grant of $85,000 for the Center of Montgomery STEAM. I will seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Hillary Wussack, seconded by Cindy Flechek, to approve the Future Ready CTE Impact Grant for $85,000. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have the 2024 Case Implementation Grant sponsored by Corteva AgroScience for $5,000 for the Sauer Steem. I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Chris Wussack, to approve the 2024 Case Implementation Grant sponsored by Corteva AgroScience for $5,000. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Okay, Minnesota Agricultural Education Leadership Council Grant in the amount of $3,911 for Montgomery and Lee Center. I'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make one.
Second it. I have a motion by Chris Wussack, seconded by Marsha Franek, to approve the Minnesota Agricultural Education Leadership Council Grant. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have the PLTW and Partner Burns &amp; McDonald Grant in the amount of $5,000 for Montgomery. I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Marsha Franek, seconded by Cindy Flechek, to approve the PLTW and Partner Burns &amp; McDonald Grant of $5,000 for TCU Montgomery. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion has passed, 6-0. Next, we have PLTW and Partner Burns &amp; McDonald Grant for $5,000. $5,000 for the Center School. I will seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Chris Wussack, seconded by Trevor Hohn, to approve the PLTW and Partner Burns &amp; McDonald Grant of $5,000 for TCU Lee Center. All those in favor?